Thank you, but I want to welcome. Good evening. Oh, thank you, my brother. My name is Dean Gabriel, Communication Special School of LaFouche Parish Public Schools. And tonight we gather in this gym to celebrate your children, students of LaFouche Parish Public Schools, for perfect LEAP award scores. I'm so jealous. I never had a perfect LEAP score, or a front, but I am very impressed with you guys. So tonight we kind of, in a rush to kind of get this done, because we do have a board meeting later on. So what I'll do tonight is I'll turn over the mic to our superintendent, Dr. Bruce Bottoms, who will welcome you officially to our awards ceremony. Thank you.
Good evening. First off, welcome to our wonderful students, the contributions tonight. We watched recently a lot of big crowds show up, a lot of celebrations for different things, the LaFouche Powers, whether it's South LaFouche High's basketball team, or Central LaFouche's soccer teams, or the recent state championship from Thibodeau High School's basketball team. We also saw lots of people showing up for band festivals and other concerts and so forth. And I'm more than excited to see a large crowd out tonight for us to celebrate some of our academic achievements at LaFouche Parish. The students tonight who are being recognized have the highest scale scores on certain LEAP exams that they took this past school year, which led to LaFouche Powers being ranked the third highest performing district in the state of Louisiana. That's no small accomplishment. We have a whole bunch of schools in this system, 28 schools, the Career Management Center. We spread out close to 100 miles from north to south. And we've got much diversity in our powers, which makes us special. And a turnout rate number three is absolutely wonderful, with each one of you in here playing a big role in that. Before we get started with the program, I do want to recognize we have several board members in the audience tonight. Some are up here, some are in the back. If you could please stand and wave our LaFouche Parish School Board members. Please clap. We also have several of our district's local staff members. If you could please stand up and be recognized. That's from... We have a whole bunch of our principals here, who are here to support their students. If you could please stand as well. Now, I know we currently have in the room a bunch of assistant principals and administrative assistants and other faculty and staff teachers and support staff in the audience that help contribute. I want your awesomely recognized as well. Somebody didn't stand, I said teachers, because I see some people in the audience. And last but not least, I want to thank all of the parents, the grandparents, the aunts, the uncles, the friends, the brothers, the sisters, and everyone else in the audience tonight that support your kids for being able to be recognized tonight and support the LaFouche Parish Public School System, one of the premier in the state. I thank you for being here tonight. Let's give them a round of applause as well. And for God, everybody, thank you too. With that being said, we're going to go ahead and get started with our program tonight. And we moved over to the gym for this one. Last year, we did this in the cafeteria. And many of you have been in the cafeterias with those little mini-seats. We were quite crowded, so we wanted to have more space tonight. So that's why we moved into the gym, because we have a whole bunch of kids to recognize. At this time, I'd like to call Mr. Kenny Delton, who is our Accountability Supervisor and also Middle School Supervisor, to begin calling out our students to come receive your award.
The first group of students that we'll call to be recognized are students who made a perfect 850 score on the LEAP English Language Arts Test. Now, all of these tests that we're going to call, we're not just talking about one day test that had to be perfect on. Most of these tests occur over three days in three separate sessions. So that means that these students not only have to be perfect on one thing, but they have to be perfect over the course of three days. So that makes this even more impressive of an accomplishment. So we'll try to say please hold applause until we get to the end of the group. And when you call the students, please come up to Dr. Bottoms. He has some, he has some things for you. So first, first student, perfect score E.L.A., Sydney Oakland, Bayou Community Academy, Georgia. Eli Battleow, Bayou Community, Georgia. Brayden Boyd, Chag Bay, Elementary. Elise Crowe, Bayou Community, Academy, Georgia. Elijah Brown, Bayou Community, Academy, Georgia. Macy Durbin, Cut Off Elementary. Madeline Ellis, Bayou Blue Elementary. Addison Handley, Lockport Upper Elementary. Ellen Bonazo, Chag Bay Elementary. Adam Nanke, Lockport Upper Elementary. Cecilia Nguyen, Bayou Community Academy. Allison Patton, Bayou Community Academy, Georgia. Paige Vernon, Raceland Upper Elementary. Landon Busby, Bayou Community Academy, Georgia. Connor Jeremy, East Thibodeau Middle. Katie Claywell, Six Ward Middle School. Daniella Felicia, LaRose Cut Off Middle School. Valerie Galliano, Bayou Blue Middle School. James Siro, Bayou Community Academy, Georgia. Mia Griffin, Golden Meadow Middle School. Roger Loren, Raceland Middle School. Sagan Bruce, Golden Meadow Middle School. The following students scored a perfect score on the 2018 LEAP Mathematics Test. Cooper Melasone, South LaRose Elementary. Tyler Durbin, Cut Off Elementary. Wyatt Claywell, Six Ward Middle School. Lilian Tamplane, Six Ward Middle School. Gavin Terro, LaRose Cut Off Middle School. The following students scored a perfect score on the 2018 LEAP 2025 Social Studies Test. Grace Ridgeway, Six Ward Middle School. Jayden Shasso, Six Ward Middle School. Kate Shasso, Six Ward Middle School. His twin brother, that's not optimal. Paige Shasso, Six Ward Middle School. Fayley Corto, Bayou Blue Middle School. The following groups scored a perfect score on the High School Algebra I Math Test, 2018. Sarah Axe, Thibodeau High School. Abigail Orsono, Thibodeau High School. Cole Apple, Thibodeau High School. Zach Kramer, Thibodeau High School. Vincent Marin, Thibodeau High School. The following students received perfect scores on English I High School LEAP 2025. Abigail Orsono, Thibodeau High School. That's the second one. Jayden Babbitt, Thibodeau High School. Andrew Shasso, Thibodeau High School. Kaylee Rodred, Thibodeau High School. Cole Weber, Thibodeau High School. The following students scored a perfect 850 on their 2018 High School English Two Test.
Trinise Clay, Thibodeaux High School. Emily DeGries, Thibodeaux High School. Jenna Faust, Thibodeaux High School. Sarah Kramer, Central LaFouche High School. Kristin Lusay, Thibodeaux High School. Christian. Heather Phipps, Virtual Academy of LaFouche. Celia Price, Central LaFouche High School. Alexis Rishu, Central LaFouche High School. Alexandria Westcott, Thibodeaux High School. The following students scored a perfect score in the 2018 LEAP 2025 English Test. Carter LeBlanc, South LaFouche High School. The history students scored a perfect 800 on the 2018 Biology EOC Test. Drake Root, Central LaFouche High School. Grant Pembison, Thibodeaux High School. And Kristen Townsend, Thibodeaux High School. And finally, this student scored a perfect score on the U.S. History EOC in 2018. Russell Walters, Thibodeaux High School.
Well, one thing I failed to mention earlier, just because I forgot, is Facebook is not always right. Something's wrong with it tonight. It's not working. So we did have this moment, the lot of our IT department filming things, so we'll get the video posted up later. I don't know for the board meeting, the night of those of you that have got accustomed to watching it, if Facebook is going to be working. Mr. Giffey showed me earlier the map, it's almost throughout the whole country, that they had a problem with it today. But normally this would have been streamed along with tonight's TV, but we are, we do have this video, because I know some folks who weren't able to be here tonight want to watch it. Again, let's give a huge round of applause to all the students. And thank you once again to all of you who help support your students, who make us the great school district that we are. And it's because of your efforts, the students, the parents, caretakers, community members, that make us happen. So tonight is one of those nights that you can get your parents to go shop mode. Go eat at a place to celebrate tonight here at LaFouche Parish. And have that revenue flow back in and keep our schools viable. There's Chick-fil-A's over and over that dinner hour, so that's popular with the youngsters these days. Again, thank you all for coming out, and I encourage all of our parents and grandparents, get involved with the schools. We don't always need you to bring money, but your presence and your involvement and your support is just as important as any fundraiser or dollar that you can give. So please stay involved, stay encouraged and help compete, and stay supportive of our schools. Thank you, and have a wonderful evening. Suddleston.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Tita.
Here.
Dr. Bro.
Here.
Dr. Guyot.
Here.
Ms. Bujua.
Here.
Mr. Tyler Dufresne.
Here.
Mr. Schwest.
Here.
Mr. Plazons.
Here.
Mr. Duplanis.
Here.
Mr. Gisclair.
Here.
Mr. Archer.
Here.
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
Mr. Troy Dufresne.
Here.
Invitation by Ms. Cheryl Thomas, District 3, pledge allegiance by Mr. Al Archer.
May the knowledge and opinions that we share this evening enrich our lives and the lives of our students, teachers, and all school officials. Help us to grow in understanding, patience, and love. And may we continue to grow in order that we may share our problems and our triumphs. Be with us as we make decisions affecting the lives of our most precious possession, our children. We ask this in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, the liberty and justice of all.
E, policy of public participation. It is the policy of the Board to be openly accessible to all individual citizens who wish to express comments regarding agenda items before the Board. A public comment period shall be held before Board discussions, if any, relative to the item and before voters take in on a motion made in reference to agenda item. Any member of the public who wishes to speak on an agenda item may do so by: A, completing a speaker card and submitting it to the official reporter prior to the opening of the meeting. Speakers shall be recognized in the order in which cards are submitted. B, when an individual has been recognized to speak on an agenda item, that individual shall submit his or her comments to matters that are certainly relevant to that agenda item. The President reserves the right to stop any comments when deemed necessary. C, there shall be a five-minute time limit imposed on any speaker or group for a Board meeting and a 10-minute time limit for committee meetings. For more information regarding public participation under LaFouche Parish School Board and Committee meetings, please review LPSB Policies, BCBI, and BBC available online. Two, approval of Board Consent Agenda. A, approval of Board Consent Agenda Items. B, minutes of regular Board meetings held February 6, 2019. C, minutes of Board Member in Service held February 11, 2019. D, minutes of Land and Facilities Management Committee Meeting held February 12, 2019. E, minutes of Policy and Procedure Committee Meeting held February 18, 2019. F, minutes of Academic Committee Meeting held February 18, 2019. G, minutes of Transportation Committee Meeting held February 19, 2019. H, minutes of Insurance Committee Meeting held February 20 of 2019. I, minutes of Finance Committee Meeting held February 20, 2019. J, minutes of Advisory Committee Meeting held March 11, 2019. And K, proclaimed Thursday, March 21, 2019, as Retired Teachers' Day in LaFouche Parish. Do you have a motion? Motion by Mr. Robbie Disclair, seconded by Mr. Mary Plazons. Let's vote. Any discussion? I'm sorry. Any discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes unanimously. Three, approval of Land and Facilities Management Committee Recommendations as per meeting held February 12, 2019. Mr. Gisclair.
A, to consider the recommendation of the Land and Facilities Committee and select the architect for the East-West School Project. B, to authorize to advertise for bids starting on February 14, 2019, for the re-roofing of Building Number 6 at Bayou Blue Elementary School. Sorry, make a motion. Apologize. So I need a motion on A, to approve as recommended by the Land and Facilities Committee, Wymer Grove Flores as the architectural firm for the new East-West Middle School Project. So move. Got a motion by Mr. Dufresne?
This is motion by Mr. Disclair, seconded by Mr. Troy Dufresne. Any discussion? Dr. Mary Brew.
Sitting through all of the interview presentations, you know, I think everybody had a really great presentation. I think any of the three candidates that we looked at would be good choices. At the conclusion of that meeting, each of us on that committee had to vote to say who we thought would be the best architect for that project. The particular architect firm that is being recommended is not the one that I voted for, that I felt would be the best. Couple of reasons. I feel that we need to keep as much funds in LaFouche Parish in LaFouche Parish, and some of the funds will be going outside of our parish. I found that to be more with the one that we're recommending. So that's just a personal item that, you know, I thought was of big interest. And the other thing was that there's not a lot of projects that we are able to physically go and see locally. The other two did have many, many projects that were completed that we could go and see. They did say that we could go see some in Texas, but we know our teachers and we're not going out of state. So for those reasons, I appreciate it, but I'm not going to be able to support that motion.
Thank you, Dr. Bro. Any further discussion?
So I also sat through the interview. I'm not convinced that that's the best choice. And again, if I had a vote, I wouldn't have been voting for the one that the committee approved. And so I'm not inclined to support it. However, I appreciate the committee's work and their position on it. But I plan not to support it unless there's something, somebody can convince me of something in the next three or five minutes that we discuss some more, that it's the best choice.
Thank you, Dr. Guyot. Anybody else? Mr. Schwest?
I agree with the other two, you know, that, you know, settlements and everything, with money's going outside to Texas and everything, just not even outside the parish, you'd even be outside the state and everything. So I agree with the other two, you know, that I can support this one.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you very much. Any further comments? Any further discussion? Let's vote. Eight yes, six nays. Motion passes unanimously. I'm sorry, and one abstained. Could you state why you abstained, Mr. Tom? Thank you very much. Eight yes, six nays, and one abstained. Motion passes. B.
To authorize to advertise for bids starting on February 14, 2019, for the re-roofing of Building Number 6 at Bayou Blue Elementary School. So move.
Motion by Mr. Gisclair, seconded by Ms. Mary Petita. Any discussion? Any comments? Let's vote. Motion passes unanimously. Four, approval of Policy and Procedure Committee Recommendations as per meeting held February 18, 2019. Mr. Bernard.
I ask Madam President to approve revisions to policy EGAC, Health and Group Hospitalization Insurance, and so move.
Motion by Mr. Bernard, seconded by Dr. Mary Brew. Any discussion? Any comments? Ms. Petita.
I'd just like to say that this is something that we have been trying to do for quite a while, and that is to, that Board Members do not take part in our insurance. And I think it was past time that we did this, so I'm really excited about it.
Thank you, Ms. Petita. Anybody else? Comments or further discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes unanimously. Five, approval of Insurance Committee Meeting Recommendations as per meeting held February 20, 2019. Mr. Plazons.
A, to authorize John Norris to negotiate seek quotes for the insurance policies that were renewed on April 16, 2019. So move.
Motion by Mr. Plazons, seconded by Dr. Guyot. Any discussion? Any comments? Let's vote. Motion passes unanimously. Six, approval of Finance Committee Recommendations as per meeting held February 20, 2019. Dr. Bro.
A, to amend the LaFouche Parish School Board's salary schedule effective with the 2019-2020 school year to read employees hired on or after July 1, 2019 will be placed on the salary schedule based on their documented years of experience, less the equivalent number of steps to adjust for the years in which base step increases were frozen by the Board. So move.
Moved by Dr. Brew, seconded by Ms. Tina Babin. Any discussion? Ms. Petita.
I just wanted, again, I want to congratulate Tyler for bringing this to our attention. We may need for him to explain to the audience exactly what he found out.
Absolutely. So, I'm sorry. For several years, I've been talking with teachers and doing my own research, and it was brought to my attention that since the Board froze salaries for the past three or four years, teachers, obviously, were not going up. But if someone from outside this parish, let's say from Terrebonne, would come in with four years of experience, that teacher from Terrebonne coming in would make $1,200 more than a teacher with four years of experience here in our own parish, because they have been frozen. So even though that person coming in would be placed at their correct steps and frozen from that point forward, the fact remains that they would be paid more than our teachers. Same qualifications, same years of experience, it just wasn't fair, in my opinion. So I brought it to Dr. Varong, Mr. Pat Amady, our attorney, and shared it with fellow Board Members, and we feel this is the best move to show our teachers an effort of good faith and that we want to do right by them and support them, and that we thank them for their continued loyalty to this parish.
Thank you again, Mr. Dufresne. Thank you, Mr. Petita, for bringing that up. Any further discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes unanimously.
B, to establish a $407,836.12 budget for the Wi-Fi renovations at various campuses in the parish to be funded by E-Rate 80% and by the 2017 Construction Fund 20%. So move.
Motion by Dr. Brew, seconded by Mr. Al Archer. Any discussion? Any comments? Let's vote. Motion passes unanimously.
C, to award the highest-scored, most-responsive and responsible vendors TransformX for cabling firewall and access points, Dell for switches, general informatics for racks, UPS, for the 2019-2020 E-Rate information technology equipment, cabling, and installation project in the amount not to exceed $407,836.12. So move.
Motion by Dr. Brew, seconded by Mr. Ray Bernard. Any discussion? Mr. Bernard.
I'd like someone to explain that first sentence, "Award the highest-scored, most-responsive, and responsible vendors." That would seem to be the case in every, why was that happened?
Dr. Brew.
And Mr. Byes may hop in in a minute. When RFPs are given, RFPs are not based upon only a price point. In this case, this is involving E-Rate projects, so an RFP absolutely has to be done and only a certain percentage can be based on cost. So the rest of that has to do with references that they may have submitted, the insurance requirements. Mr. Byes, what are some of the other components that gets forward in that type of rubric?
Sure. They have certain qualifications that E-Rate has strict guidelines on. So this was, the rubric that was submitted for this RFP was per FCC E-Rate requirements. So we do have to score them, and they are awarded by the highest score. So usually for bids, we would do the lowest, most responsive and responsible bid, but an RFP, it's actually awarded to the most highest responsible and responsive bidders. And these were based on different services, so we were able to break them down into the most highest-scored proposal that was received for different types of services.
Thank you, Mr. Byes. Mr. Bernard, any further clarity? Any other questions? Comments? Let's vote. Motion passes unanimously. Seven, approval of Advisory Committee Recommendations as per meeting held March 11, 2019. Dr. Mary Brew.
A, to approve to advertise for bids for the cabling upgrades project at multiple middle school sites and take appropriate action. So move.
Moved by Dr. Mary Brew, seconded by Mr. Robbie Disclair. Any discussion? Any comments? Let's vote. Motion passes unanimously.
B, to approve a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Terrebonne Parish School Board related to mineral leasing of co-owned 16-section lands and take appropriate action. So move.
Motion by Dr. Brew, seconded by Mr. Dufresne, Tyler Dufresne, excuse me. Any discussion? Mr. Plazons?
Is this correct, to property?
Actually, this, I was gonna, this cooperative endeavor agreement is for any and all properties moving forward that we co-own with Terrebonne Parish. So what we've been dealing with over the last many of years, and actually we lost an opportunity for potential bid deals because of it, is that when we share properties, each Board has been acting independently to put those bids out. And the timing of our Board meetings are, of course, not the same, so when the bids go out, they would not be the same. So the second bid would go out, you would have an unfair advantage because you already had bids that went out. So Mr. Amady, our Board Attorney, actually drafted the cooperative endeavor agreement. We block our consultant that deals with lands. Also is working with Terrebonne now. Did speak to their business manager today as well, and they're gonna approve this agreement at their next meeting as well. This allows for one Board whoever owns the highest stake. There's one of them at 99%, is Terrebonne, 1% is us. And we've got some that we own a much larger stake in. So whatever one has the most majority of the stake would actually do all the bidding and the leasing and the paperwork and on and on, but each district will receive the royalty check separately from the owner company based upon the percentage that they own.
That's what my main question was, to make sure that we were, if we entitled to one.
We're getting it. But I did want to clarify, this is for any moving forward. We have two potential ones right now, but this is for any moving forward in the future.
But these are only the ones that we co-own.
There's a handful, you know, but we also, you know, we don't have an agreement with Jefferson Parish, but I think we've got some issue like this with Jefferson that we may, you know, try to work to do the same type of agreement.
Any further discussion? Comments? Let's vote. Motion passes unanimously. Excuse me. New bus, eight new business, to receive report from LaFouche Parish Agriculture Extension Service.
Hey.
Good evening.
Hey, Becky Goutrow here, on behalf of Ms. Dama and Teddy, who were both at a junior leader meeting, and Mike Abear, and Ms. Vicki, and then Nicole, we wanted to give you our quarterly report for the last quarter. Livestock shows are going great. We're getting ready for Achievement Day, end of the year, as all y'all are. Nutrition program is still rolling. Mike's still with us. Right now. Right, anything Mike, it's ours. But everything's going great. We're ready for Achievement Day, which is gonna be at the end of this month. Normally it's in April, but with prom, and we don't want to mess up at people's proms. So it'll be on the 30th of this month, so y'all will get invited.
All right. My name is Amanda Gibson. I'm also an area nutrition agent with LSU Act Center. Last time I spoke to you guys, it was in October, introducing myself as a new agent, and I was adamant about getting into schools and teaching the kids about nutrition. Well, I have done so, and I'm super excited to tell you guys about it. I friend with South Tibbeton Elementary School, and I was doing four classes about totaling about 100 kids. And I did a four series of lessons with them where we cooked in class. We talked about all the five food groups, physical activity, and how to make healthier choices. Well, the kids loved it so much, the other kids were jealous, they asked me back. So now I'm also doing, turns out kids really like snacks, even if they're healthy. So I'm doing about 75 kids right now through South Tibbeton Elementary School. I should be ending next week, but. I should be ending next week, but it's my mission to kind of go into more schools as well. We are looking to partner with middle schools in LaFouche Parish, the more the merrier. We're going to be continuing something that's been done in Assumption Parish that has shown tremendous success in an increase of knowledge in healthy eating, where we, it's in October, for 15 consecutive days, we will give the teachers all the lessons, all the handouts, all the food already prepared to give to the students, and just give the teachers the tools to teach the kids about healthy eating without having to inconvenience them with time and everything of that nature. So you all will look out for that. I also have taught about 280 kids in Head Start so far. We teach them about all the food groups, we give them beets, broccoli, kiwi, and what is the other one we give them? Apples. Not all the kids will try the beets, but I'm surprised by some of the kids' reactions, they really enjoy it. So I've been getting a lot of great results with these kids, and I'm looking forward to continuing to do so in LaFouche Parish. I'm also about to start implementing an adult nutrition program for parents that attend Raceland Lower and Upper Elementary, because, you know, it starts at home, it starts with the parents, they're the ones who are buying the food, so hopefully I'll get a good turnout from that as well. So please, if y'all ever need anything from me, or if you ever want to recommend me to a school, I'd be more than happy to do that, so, thank you so much.
Anybody has any questions or comments?
I have to say there, I made all of my daughter's baby food when she was little, and beets was the only thing she didn't eat.
Really? Taste buds change every seven years.
We, we want to thank the LSU Ag extension, you know, Mike and Donna, and many years, Debbie Melvin, and so forth that have worked in our school district. We have really strong 4-H programs in the district, and the educational programs have expanded over the years. So we do want to thank you for our continued partnership and working together, and we look forward to that continuing in the future.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Thank y'all very much. Mr. Dupren?
Just wanted to say agriculture was one of the things we did really well in this year for the literary revenue at Nichols. So obviously, they're enjoying it, it's doing really well, so thank you.
Anybody else has any comments or compliments? Thank y'all very much. B, to consider authorizing advertisements for bids throughout the 2019-2020 school year as the need arises in compliance with the current bid laws for the following commodities: athletic equipment, supplies in uniforms, janitorial supplies, paper products, toner and printer supplies, office supplies, classroom supplies, and general maintenance supplies. Mr. Byas?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Every year I come before the board requesting permission to advertise on the bulk commodities that have been identified through the purchasing department as bid items. So I come to you this evening requesting permission to advertise for those following items: athletic equipment, supplies in uniforms, janitorial supplies, paper products, toner and printer supplies, office supplies, classroom supplies, and general maintenance supplies.
Need a motion? Motion by Mr. Al Archer, second by Mr. Joey DePlantis. Any discussion? Any comments? Let's vote. Motion passes unanimously. C, to consider authorizing advertisement for bids for the desktop computers and take appropriate action. Mr. Byas?
The IT department would like to replace outdated desktop computers for testing purposes at the various school sites, so I'm requesting permission to advertise for bids on the replacement desktop computers.
Thank you, Mr. Byas. Motion by Mr. Tyler Dupren, second by Ms. Tina Babbin. Any discussion? Mr. Benard?
Yeah, just a question, where, where will these computers go, the updated ones?
Sure, so Ms. Mona was nice enough to provide the spreadsheet, I believe it might be attached, and it shows on the very first column, which is the one we're focusing on right now, is the 755 computers, and it lists how many computers are gonna be going to each school site. So it has all of them to the left column.
Any further discussion? Let's vote.
Mr. Benard, do you want to tell us your vote?
Mr. Benard votes Y. Motion Paris unanimously. Nine memorial resolutions. A, Mr. Guy Harvey, retired principal. Dr. Mary Bro?
Mr. Guy Harvey was hired by the LaFouche Parish School Board on August 30th, 1971 as a teacher assistant coach at Tivod High School. Mr. Harvey was promoted to assistant principal at Tivod High School on August 21st, 1980. Mr. Harvey became principal at Tivod High School on August 12th, 1994. Mr. Harvey retired on January 31st, 2002, having served LaFouche Parish School District for a total of 30.5 years of service. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent, and a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book.
B, Mr. Shelton Mauler, retired teacher and administrative assistant.
Mr. Sheldon Mauler was hired by LaFouche Parish School District on January 1st, 1972 as a teacher at Bayou Blue Elementary School. Mr. Mauler was promoted to administrative assistant at Bayou Blue Elementary School on August of 2001. Mr. Mauler retired on May 28th, 2005, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of 32.5 years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent, and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute book.
Let the record reflect that these resolutions were adopted by general consent and will be recorded on a special page in our minute book. Ten tentative dates for future meetings. A, Policy and Procedure Committee, Monday, March 18th, 2019. B, Academics Committee, Monday, March 18th, 2019. C, Transportation Committee, Tuesday, March 19th, 2019. D, Land and Facilities Management Committee, Tuesday, March 19th, 2019. E, Insurance Committee, Wednesday, March 20th, 2019. F, Finance Committee, Wednesday, March 20th, 2019. G, Board Member in Service, Monday, March 25th, 2019. H, Advisory Committee, Monday, April 1st, 2019. And I, Regular Board Meeting, Wednesday, April 3rd, 2019. Before we adjourn, I'd like to announce we have a birthday, March 28th, Ms. Cheryl Thomas. You want to start us off, Mr. Troy Dupren?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Ms. Cheryl. Happy birthday to you.
Mr. Benard?
Yeah, before we, and I do want to say a couple of things about Mr. Guy Harvey. And Guy was an outstanding administrator, but here's a couple of side bits that y'all may not know. He showed me the importance of voting in every election. He is the only candidate that I know that lost a school board election by one vote, one vote. And that's a true statement, right, Frank?
Correct.
That's correct. And also, he was an outstanding athlete. We both attended USL in the Stone Age, okay? And he was an outstanding linebacker for the region, too, so I also want to recognize him not only as an educator, but also as outstanding athlete representing the school. Thank you.
Very nice, thank you, Mr. Benard. And I do want to say that I had the opportunity to work with both the, and with Shelton, and who was a very, very, a good teacher, quiet man. I called him a gentle gentleman because he was, he didn't always have a lot to say, but he was a very, very dear person. And both of these were just a shock, our students who had lost in such a short period of time, two men that really served our system well. The other thing I'd like to say is I, I had the opportunity today to attend two meetings that, that were very, very inspirational, really. The first one was the Student Government Day where the students were board members, and I tell you what, we as board members will not have to worry about upcoming board members in the future because these young ladies that were here were wonderful. I mean, they, they are champions, in fact, I even told them that I was gonna invite some of them back to, when we talk about teacher raises, I want some of them to come back here and talk, because they had, I mean, they didn't want to stop, they just wanted to go on and on and on. Because I filled out a blue card for them and said I was here for the teachers as a teacher representative, and that, that was really, really wonderful. So we don't have to worry about our future with these girls and these kids, these upcoming kids. And also, the South Tivod meeting last night was very good, we had good attendance, many of us were there, and this was about to be the new class that they're opening at Nichols for the 4th and 5th graders at South Tivod. Good response, I think that was a wonderful decision that we made as a board to do this, and I just kind of wanted to fill you in and thank you all for the support that you've given all of these programs.
Thank you, Ms. Petita, Mr. Benard.
Were there any young men?
No. When I did come in after the meeting, usually when it's a mixture of men and, and girls, it's very quiet and subdued. Oh, no, it wasn't, they had opinions about everything, and the funniest part, most of them, they had a parrot that was a teacher, and one girl said, "All her, all her friends are teachers," I don't know why, she doesn't have any other friends except teachers, because they're so busy teaching, that's all they have time to do. But they were just wonderful.
And I'd like to thank Ms. Thomas and Ms. Petita for attending that, that was really nice. The Student Government Day, thank y'all very much, good representation. And, Dr. Barry?
Just a few comments. First off, thank you to all of the board members who attended Student Government Day, who attended the legislative breakfast we had this morning in St. Charles Parish, the thing at South Tivod with the meeting the other night, and, and the phone calls that, you know, I, I know some of you weren't able to make some of those things, but you've been in touch and, and very caring about all of those, and I want to thank each and every one of you for that. Mr. Mauler, I worked with at Bayou Blue, he wasn't as quiet as you think.
He was a gentleman.
He actually stepped up when I was assistant principal and had to take over running the school when our principal went out, and that's when he became administrative assistant, he was a lifesaver. Mr. Guy Harvey was unbelievable, and I really wish he could have lasted a few more weeks to, to watch Tivod High win that state championship last Saturday night, because I, I know he would have been in that Colosseum with the rest of us. We're looking at 60-plus years of service to our district, and I'm a better person for having known to work with both of those guys. Our board member in service, we had some question about purchasing earlier, the beginning of that, on the 25th, we'll be strictly dealing with purchasing, so we'll really get into a lot of in-depth stuff with that. And also, I believe on the board meeting night for Wednesday, April 3rd, we will be starting with awards for our support personnel. Part of that, 6:30 typically, I think is where we're gonna do that one, that one listed here. And we're trying to get the Tivod High team to be recognized at the board meeting that night, this was too quick of a notice tonight, so we'll try to get there for that night as well. But thank you all for, for everything you're doing, I really appreciate it, and I know our staff does as well.
I need to know, are we gonna have the band in the lobbies like they did when they were in school the other day?
Monday morning, the Tivod High was unbelievable, you know, we, we really enjoyed it, the band played, marched the halls, and, and, and Mr. Haydale was working to try to, you know, get a, an event taken care of to thank the community. I made a comment, in that Colosseum, it seemed like half of Tivod was in Lake Charles that night. I mean, the outpouring of support from the community was unbelievable, you know, and, and we want to celebrate that with the community as well.
Any other comments?
I had, when I, I had the pleasure of doing a career fair today at the Career Magnet, and I was so impressed with that school. To say it was their first one, they had everything together, and I have been to a lot of, everything was perfect. It's a beautiful building, it's a lot being done there, and I'm just so proud of what I saw today.
Thank you very much, Michelle, and congratulations, Mr. Kennedy. Any other comments?
I have to say one thing, with Tivod High School, truly an amazing accomplishment to be, to win a state championship in any sport. I mean, LaFouche Parish, we really don't have really that many. Truly unbelievable feat that they pull off, and I hope that they can come next month, and I'd love to shake every one of us hands and be a great accomplishment.
Thank you, Mr. Plazans. Anything further?
I just have to say, I'm a Trojan, and I was pulling for the side.
I was thinking the same thing with Abby, just the same.
I'm a Trojan, too, I'm a Trojan myself, and I would root for all these.
As the post went on, on Facebook, it was absolutely obvious of support throughout the parish, you know. I, I know a lot of the names, you know, that, that posted on there, whether they were employees or community members from throughout the parish, and it was widespread support, which was really great to see.
I even had a Hanville board member tell me this morning that he was rooting for Tivod.
We have a Hanville teacher that was, and a St. Mary teacher that was rooting for Tivod, so it was all good.
If there's nothing further, you can adjourn.